Evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with the work session tonight for the City of Fairhope. The first item on the work session is the audit review, and we've got Lee Parks with Warren Everett coming to present their findings. Good evening.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate y'all's time. Let us come talk to y'all. So each of y'all should have three documents. The first is going to be a handout that's going to have a copy of our presentation we're doing tonight, as well as a copy of what we call the management letter, and then a tab for required communications. We're going to cover all those in detail during the presentation, but this is just for y'all. You also have a bound copy of the annual comprehensive financial report for 9/30/2021. This is the financial statement audit, as well as a separate bound copy of the single audit, and we'll go over that as well. So, the financial statement's got about a hundred, a little over 100 pages of information, so we're going to go kind of cover it at a very high level. So if there's anything that, as we go through, that you want us to slow down and kind of hit, please let me know. All right. So this is just a little background of the team that works on the city. Instead of myself, Lee Parks, I'm the engagement member. My colleague, Rick Blanton, is the engagement senior manager. We have a lady named Jennifer Williams who serves as the single audit, single manager. We kind of split that up into two teams to kind of divide and conquer. We also have a gentleman named Scott Pruitt who heads up our IT portion of the audit. And we have a separate technology group that comes in and does a review of the network and the controls related to that. And then Carol Phillips serves as our engagement quality control member. She's out of the Birmingham office and kind of is additional final eyes on everything, so she does a final review. All right, so moving on, this right here is an excerpt from page two of the financials. This comes out of what we call the audit opinion. As you can see, the report date was March 25, 2022, and the report was, unmodified opinion was issued, and that's what's known as a clean opinion, the higher of the opinions that you can receive. And it just says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects," the respective financial position of the city. Like I said, we're going, this is just a snapshot of government-wide, and when we say government-wide, this is the combination of not only the city, but also the enterprise funds, which make up the utility funds. As of 9/30/2021, total assets and deferred outflows were $253 million, total liabilities were $50.6 million, and the residual of the net position was $202.6 million. And we're going to drill down into the major components of these. Total cash held by the city was $57.9 million. That's down about $3.7 million from the previous year, and the majority of that is the city, 9/30/20, had about $3.2 million of restricted funds related to the 2011 utility revenue warrants. Those were refunded in 2021, and the cash that was held, that restricted cash was used to help refund the bonds. Receivables totaled about $9.2 million. This was up about $2.8 million from the previous year, or roughly 45%. Main reason for the increase was related to the federal funds, related to Hurricane Sally and the FEMA revenue. That was, made up the vast majority of that. Capital assets were $179.4 million. This was up about $5.6 million from the previous year. Current year additions were about $13.2 million this year, and then you had depreciation expense of about $7.5 million, which, the additions increase, the depreciation decreases the balance. Really kind of covered various projects, and at year-end, there was about $6.7 million in construction in progress. So those are projects that were, you know, during the year that had not been completed. Accounts payable was down approximately $544,000. That was really just more of a timing issue as far as when the year-end falls. One thing to look at, unearned revenue totaled $1.26 million. This was up about $679,000 from the previous year. This was related to the ARPA Funds or the American Rescue Plan Act. The city was awarded roughly $1.9 million by the government. They received approximately $971,000 in '21, and then will be receiving the additional $971 in 2022. They expended roughly $298,000 during 2021, so we had to record the balance of that, the $673,000, as unearned revenue. You see notes payable and capital leases are both down. This is just a product of the current-year debt service that was due on those, on both of those. Direct placements are the direct placement bonds. They totaled $11,300,000 in the current year. That's down roughly $12.6 million, and this decrease is related to the refunding of the 2011 utility revenue warrants we discussed. And then the last three things, the OPEV liability and the pension liability, those fluctuate each year depending on the actuary reports the city receives. So as you can see, they both increased a little bit during the year. This slide shows the breakdown of the net position of the city. The largest component is called net investment and capital assets, and what this is, is this is your capital assets, net of accumulated appreciation, net of any capital-related debt. And so you have roughly $167 million, or about 82% of your net position is made up of that. Also, you have a portion of about $4.3 million of, that's restricted. Roughly $3.3 million of that is restricted for debt service. Capital improvements make up about $721,000, and then you, road maintenance and other makes up about $340,000. This, next few slides, we're going to focus just on the governmental funds. And as you can see, sales tax revenue was $11.7 million, and this is up about $1.8 million or 18% from the previous year. And this is just a component of the city coming out of COVID and people buying more and getting back to somewhat of a normal life. You can also see that impact on the lodging tax. It was $1.3 million in the current year, up about $455,000, or roughly 50%. That's just a full year of travel as opposed to really half a year in the previous year. Intergovernmental revenue totaled $11.2 million. This is up about $8.7 million, and the primary reason for this is the increase in the FEMA funding related to the Hurricane Sally expenditures. We also have other revenue totaling $4.2 million, which is up about $1.1 million, and the largest component there is the insurance claims that was received related to Hurricane Now, on the expenditure side, general governmental expenditures were $16.5 million. This was up about $10.5 million from the previous year, and this also primarily was related to the increase in expenditures and repairs related to Hurricane Sally. Capital outlay was $4.8 million. This is down roughly $3.6 from the previous year. In FY '20, the city purchased land totaling about $4.7 million, and that, there was not a large purchase like that in the current year. And then other expenditures were $1.1 million. That's down about $892,000. In 2020, the Hurricane Sally expenditures that were incurred in September were included in other, and in 2021, we moved them over to general government due to their size. Any questions before we move on? These next few slides, we're going to focus in on the proprietary funds, which make up the electric, gas, and waste, and wastewater funds. And as you can see, there's a general growth across the board. Majority of this is made up of this increased usage and customers. The natural gas had had a larger increase than the other two. This was primarily because of, we had a seasonally colder winter this past year, as well as during Hurricane Sally, a lot of people were, use their gas generators to keep electricity going. And then in 2019, the city had incorporated, replaced some meters and did a leak study, and so 2021 is the first full year of having all that in place, so you saw a bump there as well. And then on the expense side, you'll see that everything has a slight increase, and that's just related to the increased usage and the increased customers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick, who's going to talk about the single audit and some other stuff.
I thank you. Echo what Mr. Parks said. Thank you all so much for letting us be here and letting us talk to you. I'm going to talk to you just quickly about the single audit, or the uniform guidance audit is kind of the new catchy term. That stack of materials that you have, it's not the black one, it's the very bottom one with the window right there, the City of Fairhope, Alabama, Single Audit Report. A single audit is required by any entity, entity that expends more than $750,000 of federal funding in any given year. And as you look down there at the second bullet point on this slide, you can see that the City of Fairhope was well over that threshold with an increase of about $8.3 million from the prior year for a total of $9.6 million of federal funds expended in 2021. That's about a 617% increase over the prior year. We're going to talk just a little bit in detail about, about that increase, but jump back up to the two top bullet points. There's two opinions that are required by a single audit or a uniform guidance audit. One is the opinion on the internal control over financial reporting and compliance. That has really more to do with this big white binder, your financial statements and the controls over them. And then the second one there is the compliance with the applicable, applicable compliance requirements. And when they say applicable compliance requirements, they're talking about the applicability of the major program, or major programs. They have a set number of government compliance that we have to, we have to test that's required by the federal government. And we're going to go to the next slide and talk just a little bit more about, as you can see, if you took one look, you could tell pretty easily what the major program was. It was FEMA last year. FEMA, an emergency grant, is a really specialized grant that comes in a hurry and requires a lot of legwork on the part of a city or municipality or entity to be able to expend correctly, and to ensure that all those monies go in the right direction. So you see that was about $7.8 million. You have ALDOT grants of about $529, Gulf Coast oil spills, impact of about $509. And then you have some other grants that are made up of about five different ones. So the last year, in 2021, the city had a total of 20 grants, 16 grants, I'm sorry, up from 11 in the prior year, and a 617% increase in the dollar value of the grants. And you see the COVID funds, that's actually made up of several different ones down there at the bottom that have several compliance requirements that the city is responsible for following and we're responsible for testing. I'm going to go to the next slide. So this next slide is on the required communications, and it references, I'm not going to go through these individually, but it references the third tab in the black handout. It's our required communications to management. Several things in there is the management letter, there's a listing, the scope and timing of our audit, and if you go to the next slide, there are, one of the big things that we are required to communicate is that there were no difficulties with management during the audit. But there are several other pieces that are included in that that are our required communications to you. I won't hit those individually, but if there are any questions, I'm absolutely happy to discuss any of them. Finally, we get here to the findings and management's responses. Two types of findings with, with any audit. You have material weaknesses, which are things that are in and of themselves sizable enough and likely enough to have happened, or did happen, to cause the financial statements to be materially misstated. A user of the financial statements could look at them, and if one of these things was wrong, it could affect their belief of these financial statements and make them make a bad decision. As you see there, I love this wording, "none reported." They'll never let an auditor say there weren't any, because of course, all the work that we do, we can't say there aren't any. There are none reported, we didn't find anything that was a material weakness for the city. That's, that's, given that amount of federal funds, that's strong. Significant deficiencies are something that in and of themselves cannot materially impact the audited financial statements, but they do rise to the level that we discuss them. There were two significant deficiencies, the first of which related to utility deposits. This is an ongoing project the city has been working on and working towards resolution. And the second was related to accounts receivable. Actually, no impact to the city's. The city's was recorded accurately. There was a receivable from the airport authority from the city that was not recorded correctly on the airport authority's books, and so that, given its size and impact, had to be reported. This final slide gives an indication of something that we would like to convey. We have a lot of clients, and we have clients that make the best and highest use of what we bring to the table, which are recommendations on improvement, and then we have clients that see findings as things that they just would like to not have. Admittedly, our favorite clients to work on are the ones that take what we say to heart and use it to improve their internal controls. This slide gives you a historical perspective on the types of things that the city had going on that was reported to them, and if you'll notice, it has kind of an arrow going to the right. It gets narrower, and in 2020, you see no material weaknesses reported, 2021, none reported, and you see the listing of significant deficiencies get smaller and smaller and smaller. And that, to us, is an indication of the city's controls taking into account the items that we brought forward and integrating them so that that can impact future operations of the city. So, these are the clients we'd like to work on.
Well, I'm encouraged to see what I would consider to be marked improvement over the last four years in both material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, but as you mentioned, the utility deposits is an ongoing project, so that's been, looks like for four years and potentially even longer, it's been listed under significant deficiency. What in particular about the utility deposits is deficient? Is it the way we're tracking them or not tracking them?
It's related to a systems conversion that happened, and when they converted to the new system, basically the, you have a subsidiary ledger that records the deposits, and then you have a balance on the general ledger, and there's a discrepancy between the two.
Gotcha.
So it's really more of a having to dig down and
Pretty cumbersome to
Yeah, there's some of these that can get, you know, resolved overnight. Some of them take several years to do. This is, this one is one that's, you know, they, they're working on it, but it's going to take a while.
Is this in Kim's wheelhouse? I know she's not there.
It is, and it's the comparison between the AS400, Immuno, and going back and tracking all that data. And, yeah, so they are working on it. We have, we have kind of committed to having a resolution by the end of the year, especially since we're getting ready to do yet another update with Immuno, but we have committed to trying to figure that out.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Chairman, I want to ask a question. So
Absolutely.
Has the discrepancy decreased over the past four years?
No, it's just pretty much been constant.
Oh, it's stayed the same?
So we know that, here's what the amount was, and as long as we track it and it stays consistent, then we're okay. There's just that difference.
Oh, okay.
And there's no new issue?
Yeah, no, no.
There's no It hasn't grown. They caught what was, you know, what it was and identified it and kept it contained.
I don't know if you had a list of deposits here comparing it to this, and every year you found the ones that were missing or whatever, therefore making it
I think if you had the list, we could make the problem go, they could make the problem go away a lot quicker, I think if it was
There's been a thing that's happened before with, especially with utility deposits and the conversion, where they dump, you know, import it over, and you kind of get this variance in the beginning balance, and it just doesn't match up, and it's just a matter of going in, finding out which one's right, and making it work.
And you have to see, you keep calling out the conversion as the point, but the truth of the matter is that's old historical. There's no telling how long it took to build up the issue that it was identified at the conversion, and then to, to figure it out, you could be talking about, you could be talking about some bunch of handwritten checks back in the day before, you know.
And can you explain the accounts receivable with the airport authority in layman's terms?
Yes, so there is, so when the city, when the airport receives grant income, the accounting for it is the city actually receives the revenue, and then the city sends that revenue to the airport. And so the city had received it, recorded it correctly on their books, and the airport had, was, it was going to the airport, but the airport had not yet recorded it on their books as a receivable from the city at the time of the audit procedures.
So you're saying, but now you know they have recorded it on their books?
Yes, they made it, they made it.
Certainly, they did.
When we pointed out
So this is extremely minor then, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's more of a procedural, just at year-end, make sure that, the airport authority just needs to make sure they reconcile with the city shows. If there's a payable receivable, then they need to have the mirror on there.
If that had happened in, say, June, instead of the month before we came, then it would have, it would have gotten caught. They would have had it recorded. But given the timing of it, I think they received it actually in November, which is just after, it's a time period after the audit date when you're still booking receivables and audit procedures are going on.
So because, so the, so the title, what's, again, what's the title of, what's the title of these?
Significant efficiencies.
Yeah, this, yeah. It might sound, I think it sounds worse than it really is.
It absolutely does. It absolutely does.
And if it was on the city's books, the number of the 166 probably wouldn't have risen to that level, since it's on the airport's books.
Yeah.
It's more material
Right. That number's a larger portion of what they have.
And assuming because the city and the airport are connected somewhat, that that's the reason. Otherwise, I mean, if we were sending this to another company, you would have no way of even
Yeah, that's right.
Knowing how they record it.
If you said you sent it to them, you know, then we may confirm it
Right.
Because we confirm a test of receivables, but we, you know.
You wouldn't be reviewing their books.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely. We would have called them, they would have said, "Oh, yeah, we got it." And boom, that would have been done. We wouldn't have cared if it was recorded on their general ledger, but since the, the airport is part.
Right.
And so, but you still have to look at that slide, that the reduction of those large ones is huge, but if there are any other questions, we're happy. We're at your disposal.
Counsel, any questions for Lee or Rick? Thank you, gentlemen.
We would just like to say thank you to Kim and Izan for their help. This was a unique year, given the COVID funding and the FEMA funding. FEMA's not an easy grant to administer.
Absolutely not.
It's very difficult to come away with, without any issues.
Well, it's something I didn't clarify, and you all, I'm sure, picked up on it, but neither one of those findings was related to federal funds. To have expended $9 million of federal funds when you were only expended a million last year, and you just can't, I'm sure you can because y'all lived through it, but the dog and pony show it takes to get all those funds out and all that supported and available for an audit to be tested, is certainly, certainly an accomplishment.
Thank you. And great job, Kim and Izan. I mean, a lot of progress been made in four years, so good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
All right. Next item up is going to be an update on grants. Jessica? How are you doing this evening?
Good. How are y'all doing?
Doing good.
Okay, I have a number of grants to discuss with you. I know we have number three is a grant as well, but I'd like to save that to the end.
Yes, ma'am.
So first up is a DECA's Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project grant. That is item number 16 and number 17 on tonight's agenda. This proposed project will install two EV fast chargers on property located within the parking lot of Plantation Point Shopping Center. That's at the corner of Greeno and Farib Avenue. The location does give us additional, or the option to grow if we need to add more of those as we see a demand in the future. The total project cost of this is $250,000 with a 20% match required, but we currently have a $50,000 cash commitment from AMEA to help meet that match requirement.
I have some questions about that.
Sure.
So we, we have some agreement with Plantation Point Shopping Center, or is that the 17, the MOU?
That's the MOU.
And so, you know, out here, and I'm so happy to see these being used out here, by the way, we have a fee based on usage, this was time, and then we have a fee based on parking. Will there be a fee based on parking at Plantation Point, and if so, who's getting that fee? Is the shopping center getting that fee, and is that going to be in the MOU? Are we, are they allowed to do that? I mean, I guess probably don't have a problem if it's allowed. Just want to make sure that going for this money, that they can collect the fee, or are they going to be collecting the fee?
We, we will be collecting the fee because it's through the machine. So all those fees are collected through the charge point machines.
Well, but, but, is there a pass-through fee for the parking charge?
There is not.
Okay.
There is not. It'll all go through charge point, same, same way.
All right, and we'll collect that for the utility
We will collect that. Right.
Okay.
And the, the lifetime of this grant is a five-year period, so one thing that we are asking, I was with Ben this morning and discussing this, we'll make sure that we ask for that five-year warranty, because that will cover us for the lifetime of this grant. Any more questions about that one?
Can I, can I just chime in real quick? One thing, I know that we had talked about this briefly, Councilmember L, what's the exact location of those? Because of the timeline of this grant, we needed to go ahead and secure a location, so we've been working with Electric and working with the folks out there in that corridor to kind of come up with the, with a good spot. So that seems to be a workable spot for us to do.
We could split hairs on the exact place for
Hopefully, we can work it out. And with Starbucks going and the other shopping center, we thought that, you know, that may, Starbucks is a good location, but too, we're not sure what that traffic flow is going to look like right now, so we thought the other one would be a better location. So just so you're aware of the conversation that's been had.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have the 2022 State Homeland Security Grant Program. You'll remember a few years ago, the PD applied for 400 barricades through this. There was no match requirement for that grant. We have the ability to apply for 400 more of these with no match requirement. The way that this worked previously for the last grant was, we applied for it and then came to you once they were ready to give us an award so that you could accept that. That's why you don't see it on your agenda tonight. That total amount requested will be $50,000. There's no cash match required for that at all.
Question about that grant. We have to buy trailers to haul all these barricades?
It comes with it. It's, it's all part and parcel. Whenever you're, absolutely. Whenever you buy the barricades, it comes with the trailers to haul them. So, so hopefully we'll, we've made a really good grant application, so we'll get that. Just as a, for the record, we estimate that we need a total of 800 barricades, trailers, to get the parade routes fully and safely barricaded with these new orange and white barricades. So with this, that'll get us, you know, halfway to that number, but I know that George and Richard are looking forward to the next budget year, because that is, that may be something that they, they look into. So, so that's $50,000, no cost match. As a reminder, we do have three hazard mitigation grant program applications out there right now. You've authorized the application of all of that, but I do want to remind you that we do have those out. One's for a safe room, the Hurricane Sally HMGP application, one's for generators for lift stations, and one is for the alert warning system. So those are the three that are out there waiting for FEMA to yay or nay, and we hope that they say yay to that. And then finally, I want to talk about the Restore Sewer Project. You know, we were awarded this in 2019, I believe, and we have made significant progress in the last month or two. We now have 100% plan documents that have been restored, that have been given to the Restore Council for review. Once they are approved, the funds will be released for construction of this project. But we have been cleared by ADCNR to advertise the three construction opportunities associated with this grant for the upgrade projects. That, those ads associated with that will be going live this week. We have mandatory pre-bid conferences scheduled in the middle of June, and corresponding bid opening scheduled at the end of July. I wanted to talk about timeline, because things here in government don't really work very quickly, so it's really exciting to do this, but we are still a little ways off from construction. We've got two-month bid process. After that, it'll likely take another two to three months, based on the extensive grant requirements that whatever selected contractor has to meet. If the project comes in over budget, which in this climate we know is possible for it to do, we will have to come back to you to, so we can come up with a way to provide additional funding if the pricing doesn't meet the funding that we currently have in the budget. Under the project award, contracts will be awarded to the respective contractors to execute. Then it comes back to us to execute. In a perfect world, in my Pollyanna world, that'd take like a week, but it doesn't really work that way. So, so there's another month or two. After that, signed contracts will start the clock for material procurement. After that, signed contracts will start the clock for material procurement. And right now, we're about three to six months out on materials for that, the, the need of materials for that. All the projects are expected to take these 365 days. So we're still a little ways out to see the progress, but it's really wonderful to see things moving. I know that Dewberry and Andy Boeby, in particular, have worked very hard to help us get this out on the street. So this represents a pretty good, a pretty good thing. What else? Does anybody have any questions about where we are so far? Oh, please tell them about, you tell them about the wars. We did get two restore wars on Thursday night. One is four generators for lift stations. That's about 20 generators, I believe. It's almost $1 million, right underneath $1 million. And then the other is, I think, $600,000 or $750,000 for the stormwater inventory for the city. So that's more restore money coming our way. It's very exciting, have a little celebration, so we're very excited about that. And I hope you are as well because, you know, it's really great to see something good come out of all of the devastation from 2010 and what it did to our economy. Okay, so now we'll go to number.
I do have questions, hang on.
Oh, please.
Please. The, the additional restore money, the generators and the stormwater inventory, any idea whatsoever when we might, could expect that? Or is that going to be two, three, four, five years down the road?
One thing I think we've learned from Restore is projects like the stormwater inventory or the generators, those are really easy turnkey kind of projects. Kind of like, I wouldn't say the comprehensive plan's easy, but they're easier to implement than the construction projects. They don't take near as long. So that's one reason why we're being kind of mindful when we present items. So I, I would have to give you an exact timeline. I'd have to get with AC, DNR to ask that exact timeline, Councilman Burrell, but.
But you don't think it's going to be years?
It will not be years, no, sir.
Well, we do have, you know, obviously, material costs. So the cost of the generators and how, whatever the lead time on that is, that is where, that is probably where we'll incur time at least.
And then Jessica, you made a comment that once we, we get our bids back, and they may have to come back to us for additional funding. This is the, this is the project that we have $10 million awarded, right? So we, we get engineers and they put this big plan together, and it comes back at $17 million. Is the, is the, is the government going to expect us to pay the $7 million? Can we scale our project back to fit within the budget of $10 million?
So I do want to, I want to bring Jason up because this is a water, wastewater project, and this is something that Jason is familiar with. I do believe we have other time constraints that are not, not just related to just an improvement project.
Unluckily, we inherited this. So what was named in the original project, we had to maintain. So we have met with the engineer, what I know 10 times to reduce cost because we knew originally there was no way to get it in the budget.
No way to do what?
There was no way to get it in the original. The original plan and scope could not fit in the budget. And we knew that from the beginning. So we have worked very hard. I think we'll all be pleasantly surprised when the bids do come in. Even when, even in the environment that we are in, I do think so. So my answer would be, it would shock me if you're looking at $17 million because we have stayed very close with Dewberry. So there's no fluff, okay? I mean, it's basic to get these stations where they need to be.
We've made significant requests to the engineer in order to reduce that scope so that we could fit within the budget. What we can account for is the material costs that we are seeing across the board.
I understand. But, but I guess my question is, are we required to? Let's say, once again, I use this analogy a lot. Let's say we're a small, poor town, and we get all this money. And then the time it takes us to pursue the project, the cost of materials are more than we can possibly afford. Now, you know, Fairhope's got tons of borrowing power, but, you know, there are scenarios at which you, you would say, how do we do this? So do we have that option?
So, I mean.
AC, DNR and the Restore projects, they have come back and plus, and plus up some of the budgets. I don't know that that would be an option again, once we get the bid back. It could be, but that'll be conversation that we'll have to have then at that time to determine how we're going to move forward with it. And I think we could even probably, we could possibly reduce the scope a little bit more.
And I'm not saying I would.
No, right.
I'd probably go along with any modest increase. I just, I just, I never like talking in public about, oh, we know it's going to go up. It's just, it's, it's allowing contractors to write a blank check.
Well, and we have prioritized the lift stations in particular that need to be rehabbed on that list. Like Jason said, we really reduced that scope to hopefully it will fit within the budget. But there are some opportunity there for us to possibly look at that and reprioritize or determine, you know, what needs to be done.
Give you an example, on the, on the $1 million for the 20 generators, if by the time we get around to ordering 20 generators, that'll only pay for 10, are we, do we have to buy 10 more generators to fit the grant?
I think, again, there.
So that, that just, that makes no sense that a government can force you to do something against your will if you can't afford it.
Well, one thing I'll say is that the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, they've done incredible work. They have been very easy to work with. They are very responsive, even to the, to the point that we'll say, we need to speak to you on something, and they'll call five minutes later. So I appreciate that they're willing to entertain those questions that we have when we present them.
Just not, it's not new to Fairhope, it's not only Fairhope either, it's all the other projects.
I can see where you just get called to something and you end up saying, well, wait a minute, we didn't, we didn't have that in our budget to spend an extra $1 million. But if they're going to force you to, you'd like to know if you have to budget some contingencies in our, in our budget for things like that.
They haven't been doing that.
Okay, any more questions about those?
Let's move on to item number three, update on the Fairhope Duck Pond Restoration and improvement of the park facilities.
I want to introduce this, I know Richard has got, got some information for you. But this is the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application. The opportunity, just so you have the, the idea of the scope, the grant opportunity allows for funds to be used for the acquisition of land and water interest for park purposes or the development of new outdoor recreation facilities. And in some instances, the renovation of outdoor recreational facilities. The proposed project that we're presenting to you tonight is the Fairhope Duck Pond Restoration at North Beach. It includes diverting stormwater runoff from the adjacent residential areas, adding a new sidewalk around the perimeter of the ponds, adding a new prefab bridge and additional amenities, including picnic tables, benches, and a gazebo. The total project cost would be an estimated $493,460, and the cost sharing is a one-to-one match. That means the city's total will be approximately 246, 3, 730, I apologize. That does, price does reflect a much higher than normal quote for the gazebo. We originally estimated that at $20,000 to $30,000. When we got quotes back on that, they came back with a quote for $107,000. That was the lowest, the lowest realm. So, so, you know, as we talked about earlier, we're seeing that everything is going up. So I would love to entertain any questions. I know Richard will entertain any questions. This is the first time we've discussed this.
Is the gazebo a requirement of the?
Well, when we go back to the idea of what this grant is intended to fund, and that is to really improve outdoor recreational facilities, that is something that, that would be a pretty good amenity for that. It's also very attractive, I think, for the, the purpose of that grant.
I also just kind of wanted to tell y'all how we got here because I, my intent is not to put Jessica on the hot seat when she has to talk about all these grants. So when we were, the duck pond is a, a beautiful area. We know that we don't necessarily like all the Canada geese down there that create, you know, a nightmare for us. But it is a beautiful area. It's an area that a lot of people take pictures in. You take family to visit the pier, you, you drive down there. The filtering system when it was put in was put in with like old lift, lift station pumps and different things. It's just never been what it needed to be to filter that water going into the bay. So as we had that holding pond and we had the duck pond, I reached out to Roberta Swan with Mobile NEP because Roberta had, they, that was, the holding pond area was a project of Mobile NEP. So I reached out to her, she came over, she looked at it. We talked about some grant opportunities, some different things. Land water conservation was one that she thought could fund a project like this because I really, again, want it to be something we can proud of, want it to function properly too and efficiently to make sure it's not filtering, you know, nasty stuff into the bay because it's so close there. So, and again, because we're doing the waterfront project on the, on the south side, I thought, you know, we need something reflective on the north side. So that was how this grant, this is how we got to this point, looking at this grant. It was not something that, I've never thought that it would, to be honest, be this much money. But it is something certainly that I think that we wanted to discuss in the work session. If it's the grant, the grant deadline, I believe, is June the 10th? Is this one?
No, this one is, is due this week.
Okay, this week.
That's why we do have a public hearing.
So that's why, that's why it's in a hurry. But I understand there could be a lot of conversation or hesitation on the council's part to move forward with this. But again, I don't want to put Jessica on the hot seat. This is how we got here. This is, you know, and again, we, I did not think that it would be this much, but we're open to conversation about it.
Counsel, any, any questions for Jessica or comments?
I just want to comment to the council in particular, Mayor Council, and this not, not inclusive, sorry, Jessica. I guess when I think about this duck pond, I think that it needs to be cleaned up, and I've always envisioned us making it look nice, from making sure that the pumps work. And I see all this on there, you know, there's excavation work and landscaping and, and things like that, trash cans, picnic tables. But I guess I never thought of this as an area of town that I wanted to put a quarter of a million dollars into right now. I mean, it just hasn't been that much of a priority for us. I mean, it's, I would like to make it nice and sanitary. But, you know, you don't always have to apply for every amount that you can get because I would rather see some of this money put. And I would say, you know, what's a reasonable amount for this? I don't know, I mean, just pick a number up, $75,000, $100,000, which would make it a $200,000 project. Or, you know, if you just take out the gazebo and I would, I mean, the mobilization cost on this, I mean, boy, these, boy, the mobilization goes up every week. Done it, $35,000 to show up to do your job that you're getting paid for. It's a, it's, it's a joke, it's a joke for you people out there doing that work. You can say how I said it. $142,000, I thought, could come off of that pretty quickly, and I'd probably be comfortable with that. But I'm, I'd rather put the extra $100,000 into the golf course or into the marina that also needs a lot of work. And, and that's where I'm at. I'm not opposed to making improvements down there, but it just wasn't a, wasn't a quarter million dollars worth. Just never been on our radar before for it to come up that quickly. That's where I'm at.
All right, other council members, Councilman Martin, any thoughts?
Well, when you say they're putting a gazebo, who's putting the gazebo? Who's building the gazebo? Is this one person, is this all come to, is the one company?
It's a cost estimate. At this point, they'll have these sort of estimates, we would have to fit that out.
Right, so where does this number come from? So we don't really know if this is.
So we did have to estimate by going to and, and looking at what material costs are right now. That is what we came back with, with estimate. That is not a solid, this is what we're going with, obviously. But that is an estimate that we got. We don't want to underestimate and then come in here and, and tell you guys that we underestimated, we need $100,000 more dollars. I think we talked about that earlier. So, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to put you in that position either.
So it could be a lower price, we could find someone to do a gazebo.
Correct.
So like $110,000 for the bridge might be lower as well?
Or you could strike it out and come up and ask for just a less amount, change your estimate.
And I appreciate y'all, I know y'all are trying to meet the deadline, so this is a scramble.
And, and just so you know where these numbers come from. For example, Giffen Recreation is a company that represents a, several vendors that are part of the Sourcewell, which is polygon structure. So, and actually, it was the, that 107 was the 28 by 28 gazebo. So we said, hey, if we just do the Sourcewell contract, hired you to build this gazebo in this location, what is the turnkey price? And it was that number. Now, here's the thing, the, the general contractor bids on this, he has to, he, he has to build us something equal to or equivalent, okay? And if he found a company that could build the same gazebo for $65,000, well, you know, that's going to be his price. On the, the bridge, we sent to Liberty Bridge Company, which is a company we've used for pedestrian bridge, could you build an exact replica of that bridge, powder coated white, matching exactly, we measured and sent them a drawing, and they said, yes, we can. And this is, if, if we were going to do this as a standalone project, this is what it would cost you to replace that bridge exactly in kind with an aluminum structure, powder coated white. So are those numbers probably all high? Yes, but we would rather make sure in the application that we are high than we are, are, are shorting ourselves. So that's where those numbers, and then Thompson has, has done some pro bono work that, you know, their quote is they think that's how much, you know, there are 1,654 cubic yards of material that needs to come out of that pond to clean it up. You know, that, so.
Let me stop you, Richard. I'm not questioning what the numbers are on the paper. I'm questioning what we're committing to. I don't doubt that these numbers are accurate. They can be 100% accurate. What I'm saying is, me personally, I'm going to vote no for $250,000. And I'm going to ask you all to vote no on $250,000 because I think it's too much money going to the duck pond. That's the bottom line.
All right. So can, so, so Richard, don't leave me. Stay with me for one second. So it's not just the duck pond, right? What are we doing with the stormwater? The structures for that and the beach area? Like, is it just the duck pond? Kind of give me a better understanding.
Well, and I think the challenge is, we have a, a, a existing condition that needs to be addressed. But this grant has to have justification of increasing the recreational opportunity of the area that the money's being spent on. So I, I'll tell you, we could, we could boil this down to let's just muck out the duck pond, replace the pumps and the filters and the outfall and, and do some stormwater. And as our grant advisor said, if this comes across their table as a stormwater project, they're, you're not getting it. So the, the thing is, 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 and I'll tell you, I have a personal, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you.
Just trying to sell your idea, Richard. That's, that's what you're doing up there. And I'm trying to say is that, you know, I'm just, I'm a part of staff selling your idea on this. This is, you know, all these things are good, and it would improve it. And so nobody said take all of this out. You could take out just a decent amount, but it's just a, it's a sales job is what you're doing right now, Richard. That's what I see, just a sales job.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Martin?
Well, he's the one tasked with promoting it, and it's obvious.
Well, we were asked to do a job.
No, no, you're not, you weren't, you're out of line. You're, you're out of order, actually, too.
Any other questions? Well, hold up. Well, let's continue.
I can have an order in the meeting when they ask for permission to speak.
All right, well, I'm running the meeting, so go ahead.
Is there anything else we can answer about this particular grant?
Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I, I, I understand, Richard. Yeah, this is quick, it is quick. It is quick, guys. I mean, this is a lot of money to, to throw at us in the work session to vote on in the council to be approved by tomorrow or whatever. That's the, that part I don't like, to be honest.
And what do you think, like, for a different, like, for another round, or, or not do it?
Yeah.
But when money becomes available, I mean, we've been applying, and it's just another project that we thought would make sense for us to do because it does need attention.
I think it needs attention as well. I just don't know if we're, I don't know where we are as far as our due diligence, as far as pricing and the cost that we're spending, trying to rush to it. That's the only thing I, you know, I, I really do think it needs attention, and I, and I, you know.
Just, just so you understand, Councilman Martin, this project will be bid, just like everything else. So it will be a competitive bid. So it will, that price may not be that price.
And that's where I was trying to get at earlier.
Yes, everything could be a lesser price, we just don't know that right now. We have bid it at the high, I mean, we've shown it at the high rate, knowing that it could come in much lower. We just don't know what that is until we bid the project. But we don't even have the grant award yet to be able to do that.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that that north side, you know, my wife and I walk that north side, it definitely needs something done to it. You can't even walk that place without getting run over by cars if you're walking in the morning times. The sidewalks definitely need to be done. It's, that pit, that pond is a pit, not really a pond. It's true, and then we're going to have this beautiful side over here, and if you walk however many football fields that is to that side, it's, definitely something needs to be done. I don't know if we can come to a happy medium as far as the pricing and what we do, you know. It's something to talk about, that's why we're here today.
Right. Then the other thing is, this grant would not be awarded until October, so there'll be time to budget. But again, we would probably budget on the high end, not knowing what it's going to look like when we bid it. But again, that price could come in much lower, but we don't know that right now.
Never since my ten years on the council have I ever seen us commit to a price and then not inflate whatever we did to meet whatever we approved initially though. I put constraints on the front end of, I mean, I can be, y'all, I mean, I'm just one vote, it's just my opinion. I've never seen it come in less. They'll go, well, we budgeted this amount and we got this much matched, so we're going to spend it all.
And balloons? Councilman Bean, any thoughts?
Yeah. When I first read the first page, I thought, that's a great idea. Then I opened up the pricing, I thought, whoa. And I have to agree with Jack, at this stage of the game, yeah, we need to do something, we don't need to do it like this. And the point of these numbers, to me, is irrelevant. The number we have to work with is this number, period. End of discussion. I'm not interested if it could be lower, it could be higher, I'm not interested. This number is the number we have to work with, and this number, at this point in time, with all that we have to do with what I consider a lot more serious issues and problems in the city that we have to take care of, I think is this, is, we're just not the right time to do this.
Well, counsel...
Commit ourselves, like I said, to a quarter million dollars is just...
Well, let me, let me ask you all these two questions. One, is there a lesser amount you would be comfortable with? Or two, would you rather just pull this from the agenda tonight and deal with it another time? The issue that Jessica and Richard were tasked with is that, and so I don't want them, you know, being thrown under the bus with this because I think they were just given a, hey, here's a grant, you got a deadline of this. If we want to consider it, we got to present it in a work session and vote on it tonight, or else they're not able to apply for the grant in a timely manner. If we don't feel the amount is realistic, we can either curtail the amount, or we can just pull it all together and say, let's address it at a future time when, when there's another opportunity.
I, I just want to, I want to ask a couple of questions. I think the amount is, is, is to be as expedient as it is, you know, I do want to do something to that side. I think something needs to be done to that side, for sure. Whether we spend a quarter of a million dollars, that's a different question. But where do we, how do we, the accounting team, this money's, where does it come from? Like, are we, like, do we, how do we come to the conclusion that we thought that we had enough money to spend the two-fifty and be okay?
One thing is, we, it, we won't be awarded the grant until October, so we would have time to budget that amount for next year. Hoping that it would be approved in the budget, yes.
So like, when we present something like this, it would be nice to have Kim or one of the girls say, okay, this is what we want to do, and this is how we're going to do it, so we would know that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. And then all that information is in front of us, and we can make a better decision, especially in a timely manner of this, you know?
Well, that's, that's why we're talking about it on the work session.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I said earlier that you, we would not, it would not award until October, so you would have time to budget for it.
Right, so when you say budget, then we would have funds coming in that would pay for this. I'm just speaking aloud.
Yes, we would include, we would just include it in the budget next year.
Yeah, and I'm not at anybody, I'm just speaking aloud, so, so we can kind of talk this through. So there is a plan, fiduciary wise, to pay this out, and we're not just saying, hey, we're going to spend it.
Well, it would still have to, it would have to be budgeted, and the funds would have to be there to cover that expense.
And we haven't gotten to that point yet.
We haven't got to that point yet. But if we were awarded the grant...
Right, if we were, let's go, yeah, go ahead.
Then we would put it, then we would put it in the budget for next year to be considered by the council.
To be considered by the council. So all we're doing right now, this is, this is, all we're doing right now is having the opportunity. It's still not finalizing it. We still would have to make a final decision in the budget.
You would, you would.
When you submit the grant application, you're committing yourself to that, because if they award it...
You can't, you don't want to be in, having to turn it down.
You could say, no, we don't want the money, but you don't ever want to do that.
It's better to not apply if you're not sure.
So you asked a question about what, 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 you know, because I started this ruckus, what would I be comfortable with?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, realistically, what I think would be a good number to have spent there to make it somewhat acceptable would have been, say, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But if we double that, then you get the sidewalks and landscaping and maybe the aluminum bridge. If you, if you do that, you get a quarter million, you still get all that. You can still get all that. So, and I think that that would be improving the, because we haven't got to the budget, and I'm thinking about how, you know, we, we, the golf course, for instance. I think of all these hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand golf course, we certainly like more money. Shaun at the pad and the marina, there's, there's unlimited amount. We got some tennis court discussions, do we, do we need bathrooms out here, this, this land we're talking about purchasing? I mean, there's no end to the expenses, so... I just, and so if we decided to put it all in that north park, I'd live with that decision. But I just know, I never thought of that as being that high.
Crucial.
Or that crucial.
So is, is coming back and saying, okay, if we take item sixteen and seventeen and say, no, that's not sixteen and seventeen, I'm sorry. Item number eighteen, five and eighteen.
Five is the public...
If we, if we lowered that to total project cost estimate to two-fifty, city match at one-twenty-five, and then retrofit the project and then submit it, can you do that?
I don't, I think that we are out of time for that, to be, to be very honest with you. Because that would give us about forty-eight hours to go back and redo cost estimates. And I feel like, that is my personal opinion, if you ask for it.
You, you don't think you can change this cost estimate in forty-eight hours?
I think that changes the scope of the work, changes the scope of the project. I mean, we're willing to do whatever it is.
Do you think, so, on the gazebo, do you think we could get a gazebo for less than a hundred and nine?
Let's just strike it out altogether.
Yeah, and I'll tell you...
Strike the line item out, strike out the line of, you know, I mean, I guess you got to put something in there for mobilization and landscape. And you could, you could bring that down to some...
I, I think, yes, I think we can put something together. I would rather attempt something less than not to attempt anything at all. So I think that, that, that's workable. You know, I think the, for example, the, the bridge, the, it's a maintenance issue today. And, but again, we could take that out and say, let's have it...
Wooden bridge that we just...
Or, or, or a heavy repair and recoating of the, of the bridge.
Existing bridge.
And look at a lesser gazebo option or more, a simpler pavilion, something not as, as, maybe as fancy. So, yes, I mean, the key, you know, especially, and then look at reducing the amount of sidewalk to, you know, with a master plan that we can always add to it in the future. So, yeah, I think we could.
So will we have to rewrite that? Or you're saying that...
We hadn't, we haven't submitted the application yet, so, you know, we're, we're here seeking permission to do so, and this was where we were at today.
Got you.
I think if we could give some, if, maybe we could be given permission to, with a not to exceed, if that's what you want to do, and let us look at the grant application to see if we can make those modifications to, to go ahead and apply, then we could do that.
Counsel, how do y'all feel about that, coming in at a not to exceed amount and letting them at least investigate and move forward?
I said one-twenty-five, I support one-twenty-five. And that's even more than I ever woke up this morning thinking I was going to spend on the duck pond.
Right.
And one-twenty, one-twenty-five would be our, our portion of it?
Our portion.
Correct.
Two-fifty total project.
A quarter million dollars spent up there is a pretty significant amount of money in there. I mean, that's pretty darn significant.
Well, what we can do is modify, we can modify that item on the agenda, and then y'all can give it your best shot, you know, assuming we move forward with that.
We, we can pencil it, sir.
Okay. Well, are you good with that, Kevin?
Yeah, I was just going to say, first of all, I do appreciate the work that y'all done.
Yeah.
You know, you did, you did what you thought we were going to need or do for that pond, but, you know, that amount in the time, what I call in the times that we're in, is just a tad high for my indigestion, so to speak.
Well, and...
It's not just the pond, though.
It's, it's the same thing as the area. I keep thinking, I'm like Jack, I keep thinking that all the issues that we do have, that we do need, that we literally have to spend money, we have to do this. And this duck pond is not a half, it's a, it's a need, I mean, it's a want. And I can certainly understand wanting it.
Yeah.
But it would make me a tad nervous. Plus of it, the other thing I want to get at is, if we, if we did approve this, even though the grant's not going to be accepted till October, but the budget is in September. So we would have to put this in the budget irregardless, and, you know, a budget is a balanced budget. Therefore, whatever, if you put two-hundred and fifty thousand of city money in it, two-hundred and fifty thousand of city money of something else comes out in order to balance it. I mean, it's a plus or a minus. And you have to do this prior to the acceptance of the grant. So it would have to go in, if we, if we tied it in, you have to go in and use it, didn't you? But as far as the question of going ahead and doing it with a amount, you know, knows the answer we've got now for the grant. So if we can't do it, you know, it's not, I don't feel it'd be catastrophic that we didn't get it done at all, and we just get pushed down the road till we could do it.
Right.
I feel fairly certain that these, what I call these environmental grants are going to keep coming down the road. This isn't like the only one, we're not going to see it all for fifteen years. There'll be several for the next several years.
I think that's a fair point. And, and just, you know, counsel, for, for the record, you know, this is not the norm. This just happened this way because we're trying to meet a, a deadline. But normally, we try not to have something on the work session and the agenda the same day because we want time for y'all to discuss and see whether or not it's something you even want to entertain. So thank you all for, for rushing to put it together and trying to get us here. I know you're just trying to...
Appreciate that.
Do your job, and we appreciate the effort. Trying to grab some free money, some fifty cent money anyway, so, thank you for that. So counsel, when we get to that point, I'm going to ask to, to modify that on the agenda to two-fifty and a one-twenty-five match, if everyone's on board with that. All right. Next item up is discussion of tennis courts. By our way.
Happy to. So I think I've reached out to most of you. We were approached about the possibility of taking over the tennis courts at Quell Creek and had Tomas from the Tennis Center go out and look at an estimate to possibly rehab those courts to add six additional pickleball courts for, for city use. And I believe Councilman Burrell and maybe Councilman Martin spoke with the rec board about that this week, and just want to see what the pleasure of the council might be.
Mr. Chairman, well, first I will say that I did give, bring this up to the rec board, and the rec board passed a resolution unanimously in support of that. You want to tell them a little more about what comes with that? You have that?
Just going to get up, it's easier to talk, I can't breathe. So we were approached by the Quell Creek, there, it's not the Quell Creek Property Owners Association, but that first little cul-de-sac that's in Quell Creek that operates the pool and the tennis courts, and then there is a vacant lot. They had expressed interest in the city purchasing the vacant lot there adjacent to that property because they need to do some maintenance on the tennis courts. And so they were going to sell that property either to, for residential use, or wanted to see if the city was interested in purchasing it to be able to use for future growth of the, of the Quell Creek in order to be able to do the maintenance on the tennis courts. They had previously approached us about buying the tennis courts, and at that time, we weren't in a position to say, yes, we would be interested in doing that, doing that. We did have a cost at that time, again, we looked at it to see about maybe turning it into pickleball courts, seeing what it would do, have to do to maintain it as a tennis facility. But again, you know, when they approached us this time, reached out to some council members, asked if this is something you'd be interested in. We have been polling neighboring communities about pickleball courts. We do know that it's become very popular. We have the indoor courts, of course, at the rec center, and then we have the two pickleball courts that are outdoor courts that we'll be installing lights on. But a lot of our neighboring communities are putting in additional pickleball courts. So we know that it has become really popular, and there's a lot of demand for it. So I thought this might be the appropriate time to talk about that because we would not have to look for additional properties, we wouldn't have to do any construction. They're there, but we would just have to rehab them. So that, the total cost on putting in six additional pickleball courts is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that would be resurfacing everything, striping everything, new netting, you know, fencing, everything to rehab those facilities.
Would we still be purchasing the, the property from those?
We would, we would. And, and again, we, we talked to them about the possibility of purchasing that and purchasing that piece of land, and also them giving us the tennis courts, and we would rehab those, and they would be open for general public use. And my, my idea for, I guess, for the pickleball courts would be that, you know, hopefully, the clubhouse, those restroom facilities are located just inside the door, that whoever needed to use restrooms would be able to use the clubhouse facilities.
I, I agree. Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I got a call from a member of the rec board, because we'd brought this up last week, and they asked that question. They actually asked me, would people, if they use the pickleball courts, be able to use the restrooms at the pool? And I said, my, my assumption is no, that that's not part of the deal. But it was a good question, and I said that the clubhouse is, you know, it's right across the parking lot. And so when we were talking, and that is totally ironic that the number we came up with earlier...
One-twenty-five.
But that's just a, really a good illustration of the needs that we have.
Right.
Didn't even expect you to come back with that number. I was like, wow, that fits perfectly. But anyway, and it's something that would be used by, it would get a lot of use. But are we going to have expenses related to having to put personnel out there to manage who uses the courts?
We have talked, and Pat and I talked about that briefly, but, you know, right now, the, the courts, the asphalt courts and the pickleball courts are open to the general public. They are not monitored for membership like the clay courts or the rec center. So they would be open to the general public, they would, we would not have to, you know, put personnel out there. And we did discuss if we ever decided to do like a racket membership, that we could do an automatic gate, and then possibly, you know, work with a member of the staff from Quell Creek to help us maybe monitor the, the courts if we needed to.
That is true, we do have employees out there that could, if it, if it got to be a problem, I guess.
All right, so are we just looking for a little direction from the council as to whether that's something we want to proceed with?
And the, the folks at Quell Creek that I've spoken with, they had a few, you know, a few requests. One would be that we would put a, if we do take that vacant piece of land, that we would put a fence alongside the pool just so if people were to park on that grassy area or until we decided what we were going to do with it, that people wouldn't be able to like, you know, just hang on the fence at the pool, because right now it's chain link, do something privacy. So people just wouldn't be able to sit there and watch people in the pool, which I said, I'm sure that's something we could entertain.
Okay. Counsel, I know y'all have already gotten a unanimous recommendation from the rec board to move forward. Y'all in favor of moving forward?
I do. I think it's a, I think it'd be used nonstop.
There's a lot of popularity right now for pickleball.
And for the record, I'm not a pickleball player.
When I talked to Mayor about it, I thought it was a terrific idea.
You are.
Well, Lisa will be out there, she's going to be the first one playing.
The total cost is one-twenty-five?
One-twenty-five for rehabbing the, right.
With the purchase of land or in addition?
No, that's just rehabbing the tennis court.
We don't want to say, we hadn't finalized that deal. But I'll say for the public, it is like...
Yeah, it's reasonable.
Really inexpensive.
It's reasonable.
It's, it's worth doing.
Yeah, I think.
All right, very good.
Okay. Well, it sounds like everybody's in favor, so move forward on that.
Thank you.
Please, thank you. All right. Counsel, next item up is committee updates. Councilman Burrell?
Yeah, I'll start with the rec board. The rec board met and passed a resolution in support of those, the courts and the purchase of that land. Also brought up in the rec board was, they are requesting us to fund, and I'm going to just give you a rough estimate, roughly twenty thousand dollars to complete the brick on the visitor's side of the football stadium. You know, they bricked the home side, I guess, last year, prior to this past season, past football season.
Twenty-twenty.
Was it twenty-twenty when they did it? Looks real nice, we got the handicap accessibility, and, and, and they would like for us to move forward with the twenty thousand to complete it on the visitors' side. And I think they are trying to get some quotes right now, so that's a request from the rec board. I think that's, oh, the, the Airport Authority has met since our last meeting. We did hire a new Realtor to market the west side property, and that's just underway right now. I think they, they may take the approach of, you know, certainly they'll sell all of it to one buyer if they find someone that's interested, but they're also looking more into parceling that out, and there are four or five rough drafts of plans that they have to just kind of generate ideas. The biggest problem we've always had over there right now, as you know, is infrastructure. There's no road, there's no power, there's no water going through there now, so...
Are they still working on grants to try to...
Still, still working on grants. We did receive word that we received a grant out there for, it was, I believe it's another one of those, like a storm shelter type grants that we applied for, the city applied for, the Airport Authority received notice that they had won that grant. Do you recall that amount, one and a half million? I think one point five million?
Okay.
For a hazard mitigation grant? Or, is that right?
What's that, the hazard mitigation?
The grant that we received, you call it the name of it?
Yeah, the hazard mitigation.
Okay.
Yeah, hazard mitigation. Yeah, it was one point seven five or one point seven eight, something like that.
Okay.
It's a pretty good number.
That is very big. All right. Any other? Councilman Martin?
So the Environmental Advisor Board, they met last Friday. I talked to Jim Horner, he's still trying to put together some documents for us to go out and walk that triangle, if any of you guys are interested, for sure. You know, I, but any other committees, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I forgot, I've had a bunch of meetings since our last...
No, go right ahead.
Industrial Development Board met also, I almost left them out, sorry. They were there to discuss if you have a, a boarding facility for pets during the day. They were trying to find a place, a zoning to put that, and currently, they are allowed in B-two. They are allowed in B-three A tourist resort. And ironically, they're not currently allowed in... are allowed in B3A tourist resort. And ironically, they're not currently allowed in M1, light industrial. And you would think of the, the three that I just mentioned, that light industrial would probably make the most sense to put something like that in, or that'd be the least obtrusive. So, they voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council and to the Planning Commission, which also would have to hear that, to make that an allowance upon appeal to the Board of Adjustments within M1 light industrial.
Okay.
That's my last report.
Makes sense. Councilman Bean?
I have the report.
All right. And I've got no reports, so, let's see. Run through the agenda real quick. First item up is a public hearing to discuss improvement of the park facilities at North Beach Park. That is an item we just covered. So, Jessica, I guess you'll kick that one off. Next item up, Mr. Britt, Mr. Baker, keep it under 52 minutes tonight, maybe? Per tree. I understand we got a few more trees to talk about, so. All right. So, Hunter, you'll take the lead on that one. Let's see. Rotary Youth for the 10-ton, would that be Richard? All right. Three-phase, Conrad, is that you, or who would be taking that?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Let's see. Item number nine, Public Works, Richard, is that you?
Yes.
Item 10, Jason, is that you, wastewater? And, let's see. Item number 11 is 16 by 12 rolling steel door for the electric barn. Would that fall under, under? Number 12 is the MOU for 68. Is that gonna be Richard, Mayor, Hunter? Who's taking that one?
I'd be happy to.
All right, Mayor, all right. Item 13, Gulf South Pipeline, Jeremy, is that you or your assistant over there?
Yeah, we'll get him to come up there with you, maybe.
All right. All right. Next is Settlement and Release. Mayor, would that be you with MediaCom on the audit? Anyone know? Who would handle it? Marcus?
Marcus.
Marcus handled that. All right. We'll ask Marcus. Less money coming, coming to us, so. Number 15 is the library, and that's the, just writing a letter of support for them applying for an Impact 100 grant. 16 and 17 are Jessica. 18 is the ADECA item, that's also Jessica, and we're gonna amend that to 250 and 125. We've got an appointment for pedestrian and bike committee. And who is, who's the appointment on that committee? Is that you, Corey?
No, 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 that'd be Jay Robinson.
Yeah, he's not here, but I think all's probably, probably well with that. Next is Street and Traffic Control, to remove excessive no parking signs at the public beach in North Mobile and Perdido Avenue.
I missed that. Kevin was there, Chief.
Has anybody seen that?
Chief was outside. She's probably here. She could probably discuss.
Can you elaborate on that, Kevin, before we ask you?
What I, what I think it was related to was, the, the people were wanting to put up all these no parking signs, when there is a beat, when there is a park there, because the residents didn't want the parking up there on the public streets. And so, I think they got a little bit aggressive with that. Is that right? Does that sound right? And so, we were like, wait a minute, you residents can't tell the citizens that they can't park to go to the park?
Agree with that. All right. Item 21, I need to add an item, and this is just a resolution, a resolution declaring an emergency, basically that the city's water line near the Grand Hotel needs repair, needs, immediate attention needs to be replaced. So, unfortunately, one of those timing things, don't have enough time to go through the normal channels, so we gotta walk this item on the agenda. But the, the ballpark expense amount's gonna be 63,000 for that, Council.
Can I get clarification? The 63,000?
Yep.
Is just to determine what's needed to fix it?
No, no, that's the, that's the repair.
And not to see if it's a repair.
It will include the repairs. Okay.
And Jason, you'd handle that, right?
Sure.
Okay, and that is it. So, Council, we got, oh, yes, sir.
Just one other, I'm sorry, something came up.
Sorry, we're running tight.
Do you mind?
No, no, not at all. I mean, we got a few minutes of, any staff wants to make-
It just came up this afternoon, just had a couple of prints, and it's, it's a very simple request, and really just a go-no-go, do we waste our time exploring options? It's regarding our sign ordinance. So, before I get to the mic, you know, we do have the Publix on 104 and 181 is now in the city limits. They received their building permit and is unzoned, and now they're in the city coming to us for a sign ordinance. The, what they, they now have to meet our regulations. The first page I sent you, or show you there, the first image is Piggly Wiggly here in town. That is a sign that, in my opinion, does not scale with a building. Every sign, no matter the size of a building, is capped at 50 square feet within the city limits of Fairhoek. The second image is ordinances that I've been a part of in the past, and it allows a signage to scale with a building. Still has caps on it, so we still don't get the Las Vegas signs, things like that. But would the Council, they're kind of under a specifics, will cer, will certainly get debated. But if we kind of move this forward and make it a hot item to revise the sign ordinance to allow that scale, is that something of interest, or is that a nonstarter, and we're happy with the, the 50-square-foot signs?
My quick answer is I would entertain it.
Okay, fair enough. That, just before we, we go through, because, you know, Publix is intending to open, I believe, in August, that one? So, they want some signs. It's gonna take a month or so to get even something to you, to, that could be-
Well, what's this, I'm trying to think the size of the public signage and the one up by Rock Creek.
So, bit larger. The, the difference is, when that was done, the sign ordinance was in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And they could go to, a shopping center like that could go to our Planning Commission to ask for, or have a master sign plan for a shopping center that could be tweaked. Currently, the sign ordinance is pulled in, it's just a city ordinance that has fees and things associated to it. So, to do anything different than that, they have to go to our municipal court. That's the process. So, without changing processes is going to be a longer-term solution, if that's what we want to entertain. So, amending the sign ordinance is the quicker route that I have. We can certainly explore both things, but, you know, we've got a long list of things, so I am looking for kind of an efficient-
I think, I think people are at least willing to talk about it.
There's not any jurisdiction to change anything with the ordinance. It's either violated or dumped. It's not a-
Right.
It's not a, any more bigger, but this route has to be a larger, and it's scaled.
Right. So, there's really, as you can see, there's really no option. When it was written in these procedures, it did have an alternative means that they could ask Planning Commission. We don't have that currently. And there's no authority really for me to make interpretations unless it's a structurally unique sign. It's the only thing I have.
I think Council's at least willing to talk about it.
Fair enough. Yeah, I'll, I'll get something to you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wish to just bring something up from a department head perspective? I know we only got a couple of minutes, but if you've got something, no? All right. Well, we'll take about a seven-minute break and come back and get the meeting started.